She usually gives me another little word to read. Good evening, we'll now begin the recording of our regular monthly meeting with a forum being present, the meeting was called Order at 6:30, 2:00 PM tonight, we immediately convened an executive session to discuss the employment history of particularly person and superintendent evaluation. At this time, we'd like to call for motion second to end executive session, return to open session. Motion. 708. We get the motion to Mrs. Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Okay, one call? Mrs. Berry, present. Mrs. Boswell Davies?
Here.
Mrs. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Hamilton, Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Ms. Webanero?
Yeah.
Okay, have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters. Any questions or anything on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion to approve the minutes? Um, Mr. Webanero? Second, Mrs. Mitchell? Any questions or anything? Okay, motion carried. Oh, in favor. Motion carried. Moving on, is it there? Yes. Did I skip a question? We're trying to make up that five minutes that we were leaving. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm trying to do a little describing of that. Nobody's a public comment. Doing fine.
And so our first topic turned out to be our student council.
Yes, great.
So, exciting news for us as we have an opportunity, we'll be talking a little bit about it as a board of education, and as we go into this next budget season, you know, we go out for our vote, we put out if the board decides to do that, move forward with a possible student member to the board. And we did some research on that, and we can't do that until we actually get voter approval. But I reached-
Unless the government.
Oh.
It looks like-
Well, they don't think it's gonna happen within the school year, so the theory is we still will have to go back out to, but we'll see. Maybe a new rule will come out. So I did reach out to student council, and we were so fortunate, we have Grayson Pandoff here in the back. Grayson, come on up. And Grayson, you can go over to the podium here and just tell everybody a little who you are, and tell us, she's gonna do a little bit of, she's gonna come to our board meetings, kind of like we do with administration, but my philosophy is, let's let her speak before me, and before I get too deep into my report, so Grayson can leave, and she doesn't have to be here all night for all these things. So, go ahead, Grayson.
Good morning, Mr. Storms, administration and board members. My name is Grayson Pandoff, and I'm here as a high school student council president. Being four days into the new school year, we would like to thank you for making the transition back such a smooth and fun one. We greatly appreciate the decorations and rooms in the cafeteria. The seniors would want to thank Ms. Davies for the last first day of school sign, and we would like to extend a thank you to Mr. Berry and Mr. Battin for holding their grade level assemblies to remind us how to be safe and kind, and encouraging us to make this one a year to remember. I was told that Mr. Manchester and Ms. Rebus organized stations for the middle school. One student said it was a fun experience to travel through the building, and they appreciated it being a different delivery of the school rules and expectations. The student body does recognize the time and effort you put into us. We start our days getting off the bus and walking through halls being greeted by smiles from our principals and teachers. We end our day the same way. Those quick little moments really do make a difference in our lives. With that being said, thank you for making the start of our year so welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Grayson, what grade are you in this year?
Eleven.
Eleven grade, so just so everyone knows that. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Super cool.
All right, well, we're gonna start off with our back-to-school video, I think that that's really an important thing, and then I'll tell you a little bit more about what we've been working on. Everyone likes to see the first act.
Your dreams were your ticket out. Welcome back to that same old place that you laughed about. Well, the names have all changed since you hung around, but those dreams have remained and they're right around. What if I could need ya? Yeah, well, we need ya. Yeah, we need ya. And we got it on the spot. Welcome back. Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back. Welcome back, welcome back, welcome back. We always could spot a friend. Welcome back, and I smile when I think I must've been. And I know where to see that you were loving it, was there something that made you come back again? What if we ever need ya? Yeah, well, we need ya. Yeah, we need ya. And we got it on the spot. Welcome-
That's okay, you left it on a special person.
I want, two, I want two. If you ever find yourself stuck in the middle of the sea, I'll sail the world to find you. If you ever find yourself lost in the dark and you can't see, I'll be the light to guide you. Find out what we're made of, when we are called to help our friends in need. You can count on me like one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, you'll be there. 'Cause that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. Ooh, ooh, yeah. If you're tossing and you're turning and you just can't fall asleep, I'll sing a song beside you. And if you ever forget how much you really mean to me, every day I will remind you. Oh, find out what we're made of, when we are called to help our friends in need. You can count on me like one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, you'll be there. 'Cause that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. You'll always have my shoulder when you cry. I'll never let go, never say goodbye. You can count on me like one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you like four, three, two, you'll be there. 'Cause that's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. Ooh, ooh, yeah. You can count on me, 'cause I can count on you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That sums it up, right? I think that what really, I wanna say special thanks to John for putting that together for us, and I think taking most of those pictures, too. So, thanks, John. And I think it really shows, the smiles that you saw are smiles we continue to see every day, and I think that it makes, even on a rough day, if today was a little bit rougher a day, or we had a few things that happened during the day, and look at the smiles, it reminds us all why we come here, and what we're doing, and that really summed it up. So, it was a really great first day, first start, first few days of school, so I just wanted to say that to everybody. We also, I really wanna thank PAT, CSEA members, everybody there, and the administrative team for the two great open houses that we had. We had lots of people in school those first two days of school, lots of people, and you know, we, I will say, elementary school always gets the, they get the numbers for sure, but we did have quite a few people in the high school and middle school as well, so I think that that's really important. You know, I went and walked through the high, or elementary school, and it was jam-packed when I went through. There was lots of people, lots of, I laugh because there were people carrying in their supplies, so they didn't have to bring them in on the bus, so that was exciting. They also had two great professional development days, I thought it was a good start for us as a, as a school. We started off with kind of our, our message, talking about our goals, and then also taking our staff to their faculty meetings and having their opportunities to spend time with their administrators, and the very second day, we ended up having Garth Larson here, who is really helping us kind of focus this year on our, on clarity and our standards. It's not always the most fun work, but Garth really gave us perspective on that, and I think that it's really gonna help us dig into what we teach, how we teach it, and I think that's really gonna be a great asset for the district overall. So those were some of the real positive things the first few days of school.
We got some exciting things, though, with the conference meeting tomorrow, right?
Yeah, absolutely, they, we have a group of students who are at a summit, a leadership summit, in Killington, Vermont. They're part of our leadership team, our, our students who are part of the Sweethearts and Heroes, and our group of students who are going through a, they're students who are in our leadership classes that we're having in our school, or will be doing those throughout the school year, so we've got 20 students who've gone to this Leadership Academy, and I was talking to them today, and they're going to be coming when they come back, they're going to be working with younger grade levels and things like that, that's part of it. They've got some role-playing and lesson-building that they're going to be doing in Killington, and when they return, that'll be part of it. So we also have some, Mr. Berry's gonna be heading on that way, we have Mr. Carter who will be going with them, and Mrs. Stitt who will be going with them, and we look forward to hearing how it went. I was in a Google Meet today with Jen, Jen Gay, who's on leave, but she's working with Sweethearts and Heroes, so she, she's there already, waiting for everyone to get, they're doing the run-through today, she told me, ready for everyone to arrive, so I think it'll be exciting.
Right, we're one of five schools in New York City, so that's great, yeah.
And we're able to do that through money through the Spark School issues, and we're working with that, so we have a few, few things we have to jump through in regards to creating junior Spark here in our school, which will be good, so when Mr. Berry returns, he's got lots of work to do on that.
Okay, Mr. Moreno?
I, I wanna, well, first of all, good evening, I just wanna, I know some of the things that Mr. Storms said about the opening days, and then last week, I think we had some good professional development, I heard a lot of our members talking, making a lot of positive comments about, about some of the presenters, Garth Larson, and some of the many, you know, many sessions we did with them, people were engaged and were actively participating, and not just trying to ride it out to get back to their classrooms and to other stuff, so, so I thought that was really good. And honestly, you can't beat an opening day when the board president continues to do things for us, so that was saying thank you to Berry, that was fantastic, and you know, started off really well.
Respect.
Yeah, right, so, but I think we're off to a, to a good school year, I heard a lot of people seem to be energized, you know, I think just like any school year, when you, when you start the new school year, there's gonna be bumps, there's gonna be, you know, obstacles that we're gonna, that we're gonna face, especially when you're coming off of a budget where you had to make some cuts, but I think we've definitely have a relationship with administration, with Mr. Storms, or not yet, Mr. Storms, you know, that we'll, we'll have proactive conversations when we face those, so I think it's gonna be a good school year, and I do wanna say this, and I've heard it many times, because I believe it started last year, and I never brought it up, but one of the real positive things that I've heard from some of our members, and still people are in shock, is just the open-door policy going into the district office, no longer do you have to wait to get buzzed in, or, you know, enter the secret code to go past, you know, it's just, you walk in and you have, have access when, when they're available, and it's really nice, people do really enjoy that, so I, that, that change I think occurred throughout the year last year, and it is a positive, so hopefully, the school year goes well. Like I said, I think people are energized, you know, some of the things that I've seen and heard from some of our new hires, I think they're remembering a lot to prove, so here's, here's for a good, good school year, and five more years for me, maybe. Thank you, Scott.
Obviously.
Just without letting you go.
He's a math teacher. Okay, reports and communications, any questions, discussion on those? I had the question about, was this one where Slick is in there?
Yes.
Yes, and evidently slick, but telecommunication speech submits everywhere about questioning their assessments, so that's good, I just wondered whether they'd be trying, they're trying to get money out of somebody, but it didn't happen. Any other questions on any of those? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the reports and communications? Okay, motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Peters? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Okay, six, new business. Any questions, discussions on any of that? Okay, motion to approve new business, six, A through G. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell? Second, was it? This is great, Boswell Davies? Boswell Davies? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, consent agenda, seven, personnel. Any questions, discussion? I'm glad we got some backup on leaves. I was wondering about when we get the needs by absences, if maybe we could just have their position, just so we know whether they're CSEA or PAT or something, you know? We've got the backup, I think, on, all four of them, so that was good to know what position they were, but thank you.
In some of those situations, when a person is, is being hired for the first time-
Yeah, yes.
They may, you know, I think it's really important for us to be mindful, like, we don't want to not hire a person because they have a leave, or they have a vacation or something planned, we put that into consideration.
Right.
But we had good conversations with all of them.
No other questions, discussion? Okay, motion to approve personnel consent, seven, A through Y. Proved, motion, Mr. Webanero? Second, Ms. Boswell Davies? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Okay, our old unfinished business, we'll look at each one of those individually, academic calendar?
So we had a, we had talked about it, there was a day in September that was, that we actually discussed it here in our meeting, and we moved that from a Wednesday to a Friday, but it wasn't reflected on our, on the one-page calendar, but it is correct in the calendar you all received, so I just wanna make sure everything matches, and so that it goes out properly. And then the other piece that we wanted to correct on our one-page calendar was the ability to do a relocation drill, and I worked probably too late with Plattsburgh State to do a relocation drill in October, and you see it on our calendar for the 23rd of October, it's called a go-home early drill slash evacuation drill. We'll do a go-home early drill this year, and next year, when we, at the end of this year, when we actually approve our calendar, I'll work with Plattsburgh State so that it's out there. I just really felt it was going to be very confusing for parents, that if I was changing something in October right now, especially that I was going to need, need their assistance with, so we won't, we'll only do a go-home early drill in October. So that will be reflected on our small calendar, but happy to report that the printed calendar and on the website are correct, so this is just making sure that everything's backed up correctly.
So, kind of, very nice with the color, I like the color.
So the, the single page that folks have is incorrect, but this is the correct.
The, the, the single page, this, this corrects the single page. We already corrected it, but it was one of those things where it was, was on the website wrong, in one spot, so I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, and Sherry didn't have it in our notes, that we had actually approved it here in our, the change, so that's why we brought it back to the board, so everything, we're not gonna change calendars all year, I promise, I can't change the calendars.
Okay, so, motion to- Do you wanna send out a parent's card about that?
I could, a parent's card, you're telling me.
I can repeat it, but. Motion to adopt the revised 24, 25 academic calendar?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters? Second. Second, Mrs. Mitchell? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Okay, then the NISBA Convention and Expo, they are now doing a digital part on 21 and 22, and we're able to do pieces of what you can, I had asked Sherry to put that on the agenda, I'd like to, I've listened to most of them, they're not going to record them from what I read, but I didn't know if anybody else would like to do the digital piece.
I would like, do you wanna do a seminar, like, here and doing it, or that?
This one, you probably would, because it's not recorded or anything, you probably would want to do it individually, because it's going to be various times during that day, if you looked at that. Like, I, I know I can't do the first, first one, but it's up to you, you can get 30 points for it.
First day's a full day, second day might have to-
Yeah, you can get 30 points for it.
More, yeah.
Anybody else interested in? What's the Monday, Tuesday? It's a Monday, Tuesday. No, it's a Monday, Tuesday. I get the problem. You can't do, can you do one day and not the vote? Uh, it's $199 for, for you going to it. No, I, can you, you said it's virtual? Yes. Can you pick one day? Well, you could pick some, some off from one day, and pick some off from another day, I guess, but it is $199 for two days. I don't basically, I can pick one day and can't pick two. Okay, so- If there's not a one-day option, I can? No, well, it is, we just pay the same price. They're not gonna be more than that, it seems to me. Well, and if you looked at, you know, it all depends on some things that people may want to listen to, you know, like-
Is it the first day or second day? I would say look at the-
The first day. If you can do the first day, I-
That's a full day.
Yeah, I- I can do Monday.
Do you?
I can do Monday. I think it's important, you know, sometimes, like, that law conference will come in and we do, everybody does one thing, but this one, you may be able to go, like, to one and not to the next one or something, and I think it would be important for people to do, because also, it gives you some, you know, you might get a pat for it eventually. Oh, yeah, that's obviously the reason to do it.
Thirty years away.
I'm worried out there, that, you know, that's obviously the selling point. If it's, if it's bound going, it's a, I would be happy to, on the front. We do, we do have money in our budget for us to do, right, Miss Kara? That's what, do this, remember, so, and it's, I say, rather coming here because it is such a long day, we might be, you might be able to get some, you might not be able to get all of them. So, what we're going to do then is have Sherry register, Mr. Webanero, Mrs. Mitchell, and Mrs. Berry. Have a motion for that? Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second. Mr. Peters? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our new business, again, no, the annual business meeting, oh, well, we already have the golden for punishment there, but if you looked at any of the resolution things, I think they were pretty consistent with the way we feel on, I mean, there's like 26 or 27. Really important one is the one that Plattsburgh put up, we didn't put it up again, because they thought, my understanding was it was going, is that tier six for individual supporting, doing something different to tier six, because it is a, really a detriment to our educators in tier six. So any guidance that you may wanna give, Mr. Webanero, and Mr. Webanero is going to do that, but anything, or did you see anything specific, Mr. Webanero? I didn't-
No, I'm looking through, I mean, I'll fill in some recommendations, maybe some of the recommendations before it feels differently, and I'm gonna vote that way.
Yep. Okay, so, we still need a motion. Chooses no submissions, we don't have any submissions, so, board chooses no submissions, so a motion to choose no, no submissions. Motion, Mr. Webanero? Second, Boswell Davies? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and lastly, our new business. Oh, I was talking to Mr. Badger at the, actually, the market, and he was showing me the stuff that he had done with Champlain, and then it was in the paper, and it was on Facebook and so on, and I commented how great, you know, just capturing history, and of course, down in, on the old building down there, capturing history, and he said, you know, how about doing something here at school? So, it's just discuss what kind of things we would wanna do, but, you know, I was thinking that this building, this campus has changed so much over 1938, I think, when it became a central campus, almost 100 years, that prior to the 100 years, it would be really wonderful on some of these blank brick walls out there, to have some kind of murals of, like, this was the original school, here's the original Pearl High School, you know, here's actually Northside, Southside, you know, elementary school, something like that. I mean, I'm not sure how to go about it, and where we could go, maybe talking, Wendy maybe talking to Greg about grants.
So I did, I reached out to Greg, or to Greg as well, and had a conversation about, like, the process that he and Amy Gulliama had done some work together, she, she actually secured some of the grants that she's seen in Platts, in the Plattsburgh area, the one over by Plattsburgh Middle School on the back side of Moore Tire, and he talked to me briefly about some of those possible grants that we would have, we could get, we did have some conversations about the, the cost of what, what the one that he just finished in, Ken Champlain was, and so, you know, I think that we definitely have to do some grant work on, on-
Grant.
Per curiam, I guess would be the right term for it. So I'll, I'll work with, give maybe a little more information from Greg, he's gonna do some, he shared some stuff with Mrs. Berry and I, and we shared it out to you yesterday, but we'll have to look into that a little bit more, and I guess really what would be interesting to hear maybe a little bit from the board is, like, what would you like to see, what would be things that might interest the board in regards to a mural, and that, you know, I think it's interesting, because I was walking around the school today, was in the intermediate building, and people were busy, so I went to the cafeteria to talk, and then went outside for recess and came back in, and I look at the mosaic mural that they made there by the playground, it's really beautiful, and that was done by our students in the garden years ago, with Mrs. Camp, who was a part of that, and Mrs. Seaton, who was a speech pathologist that worked here.
He had mosaics all over the place.
And so they did, that's really, but it's a nice one, and I would say, one of the things nice about it is it's lasted a long time, which is a great thing, right? And I think that some of the things that you're seeing down in Haywood Mesa Park, I think it is, is some of those examples of work that Greg has worked on, lasting really well. I think is, is some of those examples of work that Greg has worked on, lasting really well too, so far, not that would. So, we would definitely want some that lasts, you know, lasts a while, I think that would be really important. So, I stopped talking and let you, any ideas or thoughts?
Well, a thought might be to also get some input from our, our school community and our, and our community out. You know, we're thinking about doing some things. We talked about memorials. This might be a chance too, that if there is a, you know, a picture of a, or a mural on one of the blank walls of the gym spaces, that you also have a space that somebody could buy a small plaque as a memorial that we talked about, that you wouldn't have to do any upkeep to. We discussed memorials last year and how people wanted to do different memorials. And we have a policy on it too. So, I guess gathering input on what are some ideas and then sitting down and what kind of grants can we get? Be on the lookout.
I, I have really profound memories of my own school when I was a kid. They were prolific murals that I still remember. It does have a lasting impact, it really does. I, I do think that the history part that you mentioned is wonderful. I think, I think actually we should wait on that to 20, well, wouldn't it be 90 years? When was the, when's the next like kind of milestone?
28.
28?
I think it was 1938 that we centralized.
Okay.
That building was built in 38.
You know, 90 years, you know, something like that, maybe, maybe some sort of milestone.
We could build up to it, yeah.
Think about like how a milestone would fit into that type of process. But that would be, you know, anything.
Now, were the murals on the outside?
Inside.
Inside. Well, the only reason I mentioned outside was because the community walks this campus.
Correct, I agree with that, of what I'm saying, that it does matter. And, you know, we, with the memorials, it still supported a space, not necessarily a, a specific wall, a specific person, but a place that you might go when you need to reflect. And, you know, somehow, some way in the future that those are the good opportunities.
And if there were some nice picture, you know, the pictures that we take that we might do a mural of, then they could be placed like in the community.
No, I like the idea of murals, murals on the campus generally. I think it would be good for us to consider, because I, I think Greg is an amazing artist and I really like what he's done in Haywood Mason Park. But I think about our different buildings, like this big brick site over here on our primary building, maybe not the appropriate place for a historic mural, but something more bright and colorful. You mentioned outside by Amy Gulliama, maybe a lot of bright, colorful, kind of uplifting kind of stuff. And so, we're going to have to pick and choose across the campus. This is a spot for more of a historical context versus this is a spot for something...
Sure, like the oldest building might be the historical piece, isn't it?
Correct, yeah, also.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, people don't realize that underneath what is beaming now was just a hallway when I started teaching in 1969. And there was, there was a roadway, there was a roadway underneath there. And a lot of people don't even realize that.
You go underneath it, you wouldn't believe the roadway was still there.
Uh, yeah, I remember going in there and hearing the rats scurry around to try to find desks for people.
We shoot the rats away.
That was a long time ago.
A scary little cave.
It is, it is a little cave.
But definitely art has a way of building community, I would love to see it.
I like the idea of involving our community partners. I think that's a great way because it's something that they can appreciate.
This is, yeah, this is only a beginning step, let's move on, let's get some input. Try and see where we can go with grants.
So, we'll come back, I'll come back to us more information about where we are.
This is only a thinking process right now.
Yeah, thinking ideas and I'll, I'll reach out to administration and we'll, we'll come up with some ideas on how we can get more information out to the community, possibly through a survey or something.
Those are great opportunities, all their FSA and our KTO and all.
Yeah.
Well, you know, Art Honor Society, I believe they were the ones that did some of the pillars in the library, wasn't it the Art Honor Society that did that?
Those are really amazing too.
I mean, some, some of those things that, you know, students could do under the direction of Mr. Wilson and Mr. Badger.
Absolutely.
I guess motion would be to pursue more information and input on doing some murals around our campus to expose some of the things to the community. Okay, motion, Mr. Peters? Motion, Mr. Peters, second. Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I don't think anyone signed up now for any comments or anything, okay? And I have none on the email, so we don't need an executive session. German.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second. Second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor? Thank you very much, no one opposed?
No, we don't need any, please.
Everybody, everybody.